Okay, good morning. Board President Iribali will be arriving a little bit late to our meeting. My name is Valerie Beals, the Vice President of the Board of Trustees for, trustee for El Paso Independent School District. At this time, I'm calling the Special Board of Trustees Meetings. Today is Monday, February 5th, 2024. Toward it is now 11:07. We'll now move to consent agenda. Are there any items trustees would like to pull from the consent agenda for a separate vote? No, that's no. Okay, I'd like to take a motion.
I move that the consent agenda items be approved as listed.
I second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Call and second by trustee Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous vote by all trustees. Okay, we're gonna move to 3B and give trustee Iribali a little, a few more minutes to get here.
Okay, so we, 3B is, want the board to consider any adjustments that are, have been made to the superintendent's evaluation instrument. And we have Marti Vel Macias who is here to share information. If you recall, in year one of the superintendent evaluation, there were several metric items that were artifact-based. And since we collected a number of data points as baseline data, there have been several adjustments that have been made to the superintendent's evaluation. And so we want to bring that to the board, to share those revisions, gain feedback and/or have the board take action, right? So.
Thank you. Board Vice President Beals, Ms. Avedra, members of the board, I'm here today to just share with you all where we have landed. And actually, you all helped us land there. We actually started this process last year. As you know, Ms. Avedra went through our hopes and dreams, realized, went out and got feedback. You all met together, created instrument that created our strategic blueprint. And with that, it's that team of eight approach. I know that we have one seat that is vacant, but it's still that team of eight approach as we're moving forward with transparency to provide our district that mission and vision, as you see on the screen, that you all helped create. And everything that we do within our professional development, as we go out to the community, we share with them what we've heard from them. And truly, they give us that feedback all the time. You know what? This truly shares what we think and what we know of what we want El Paso to be and to continue to move forward. And with that, we always discuss our core beliefs and values, you know, the whole child, opportunity, community. I think that's been the biggest one. Community truly feels that we are, they are part of that process. And of course, accountability for all, excellence by design. And you all created those five strategic levers that we continue to have. So today, what we're gonna go through is just reminding our audience that is here to see us that we have our five strategic levers and we have our 17 essential actions, and those have not changed. Those are grounded within our strategic blueprint. And today, what we're gonna do is we're actually gonna be looking at, and you all did this last year, is you identified 25 key targets. And you know, targets are truly those metrics that we're looking at that are smart. You know, as far as what are we measuring, what are we looking at growing, and how are we improving every single year? So what we did is, last year, many of our metrics had baseline. If you notice anywhere within the superintendent's appraisal instrument that had baseline data, artifacts, documented systems, those were the things that administration worked on all of last year with your feedback, and we now have baselines. And with that baseline, what we did is, now that we have numbers to them, those baselines, what we did is, we put them down under the SS, which is .5 point, .5 if we meet them, meaning that our baseline is our baseline. If we stay the same, we will get half a point, or Ms. Avedra. However, what we did is, we wanted to ensure that we're always looking to grow, so we actually set metrics for this year, which is for the 23-24 school year, which is from July of 2023 through June of 2024. So as I go through, for this lever one, whole child, we have seven key targets. And within those key targets, anything that you see in a different color than white, those are some of the adjustments that we made as we moved forward based on the baseline. So I'll just go over the first one. So for example, on key target 1.1, this year we were able, or last year, we were able to gather the data that we do have extended day learning centers in all 32 or after, of our campuses. So by maintaining that, we wanted to make sure that that was a metric on itself, which is worth 2.5 points. And to maintain the 32 after-school learning centers, if you notice, we adjusted it to say maintaining 100% of extended day pre-k six learning center opportunities, that would give us the, at 90%, that would be .5 of a point. 95% fully satisfied at one point, and clearly outstanding would be 100%. We wanted to make sure we maintained those after-school activities that we had. The other piece that we had is fully license all four of the current extended day learning centers for, by June of 2024. Last year, that was baseline, meaning we were trying to identify those learning centers. This year, they're in fruition. Now, what our team is doing is, we wanna make sure that they're licensed. So if we're able to license all four of those extended day learning centers that we have in place, that would give us a full point. If we don't, if we only license two to three, that would be .5 of a point. If we license less than two, that would give us zero points. And if we license more than four, five or more, that would give us clearly outstanding, which would be 1.5. So we use that same criteria throughout our strategic targets moving forward. Would you like me to go through each one of them as we made adjustments or move forward? Yes.
So I know that this is a lot of information for the board to kind of digest. This is your first passover, if you will, of this, of the, of the adjusted instrument. I would recommend and suggest that the board be given an opportunity to review the documents closely. We, we are fully intend to bring this back during the February regular scheduled board meeting for you all to actually take action. But from the first pass, if there's any feedback, whether you all are prepared to provide feedback now or in my individual conversations with you all. But, but I do believe that, at this point, feedback is, is what we seek from you all as a board, more so than action this afternoon. Because there's a lot of, of information in each one of the levers for you all to consider. Especially if there's something missing that you all feel like needs to be added. That is something that, again, whether you all have the feedback today or leading up to the February board meeting, we just wanted to give the board an opportunity to see the adjusted document.
Ms. Avedra, but basically, and Ms. Macias, what was presented to us and what we just received in the packet is basically the same, but with baseline data.
Well, it's, it's adjusted, yes, based on if we collected baseline data, then we up the ante, if you will. Because now we would expect to see an increase from whatever the baseline data showed. In some cases, we might have adjusted the metric completely, because now that we've used the instrument once, based on just feedback, the first time that the board actually used the instrument, there may have been some adjustments. But what was important for, for us to measure in terms of what the board originally adopted is still intact in the, in the, in the instrument that you're looking at right now.
Trustee Hernandez.
So yes, I would appreciate a little bit more time to go ahead and dive deep into this. Thank you for, for making that recommendation. I think the only thing I would ask for between now and then is, whenever there is a decrease in the metric, for example, we're going from 8% to 6%, if we could just have some sort of justification for that, you know, in writing as we're studying this document, that way, you know, we were informed about that. I do wanna sort of tip my hat to President Iribali for 3.3 and working with the district to make that particular metric more appropriate. You know, that was a point of contention at one point, and so I certainly appreciate it being a little bit, you know, more amenable. That's it. That was my feedback. Thank you.
We could definitely do that. Thank you.
So I just wanna make sure, so as we go through, we will, via a board update, I can report back to the board any specific metrics where the percentage has been decreased from the original in there in terms of points earned with justification, so that you all have a rationale as to why we're proposing that, rather than. And some of that may have to do with, now that we have a little more clarity on what the state's gonna require with respect to accountability and student outcomes, that may be some of the rationale, but we can share that with you.
And Ms. Hernandez, you're exactly right. You'll see that mainly in our lever number two with the academic excellence. Now that we have the baseline from the state that came in, again, the new test, everything that we've learned, what we did is, we got this year's data and we use that as the baseline. And we put it on that .5 SS column, and then we move forward with a same percent increase, but using that as the baseline. But we will put that in writing, and we could share with you exactly what we received. And in February, we're also gonna share with you all the taper information, which will show you, you know, the justification and the clarity of where that information came. So you'll get it both. You'll get it from the update plus from the taper report.
Other questions?
Perfect. And with that, the other piece that we will bring forward is the recommendation for the superintendent evaluation timeline to also be adjusted. Formative to be February of 2024, second formative in June of 2024, and the summative in September of 2024. What we did is, we, we broke it down into three now, based on the information that we're receiving, compared to the four that we had from last year. So that's something that you also give us feedback on moving forward. And we'll, we'll have you take action in the February board meeting. And sorry for my froggy voice. I caught something.
So the only feedback I have is, for the first one, it says that we'll be doing our formative next month. So we don't even know what metric tool we're gonna be using, so I would push that back to March, because the board won't have any time really to look at the new, I mean, we would vote on it that same day that we would do your formative, so we'll need to move that one back a month.
Yes, sir, I'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go to item 3A, discuss and take appropriate action on method of filling vacancy in trustee District 3. Ms. Avedra, or is that Ms. Collins? Ms. Collins, do you wanna kind of set the stage and then we can go into the conversation?
Yeah, so as everybody knows, trustee Osavedo was elected to city council, and by taking an incompatible other elected office, he automatically resigned from his trusteeship here at EPISD. Basically, the board has two choices. You can fill the position by appointment, or you can fill it by election. Because there's more than one year in his term remaining, the law requires that the vacancy must be filled within 180 days from the date of his resignation or the vacancy of the position. For an election, I don't know if you just want me to continue.
No, yeah, so.
But if you were, go ahead.
Yeah, so really, we went through this before. I know with Freddie, when he resigned from the board for the new trustees, we have three choices. We can appoint, we can go into an elections process, or we can, can leave the seat vacant until the next.
You cannot, you cannot leave it. You cannot, because there's more than one year left in this term.
Okay, so we're talking about two options before us today. I know that Ms. Collins did a lot of work, and thank you, Ms. Collins, for the memos that you've given this board and all the information over the last several months to prepare us for this. But before you is gonna be an estimate for what an election was cost, would cost, and this is just for a regular election. It is not including a potential runoff if there were, were to be one. Correct, Ms. Collins?
So let me give you clarity on that. In the backup, that what was posted was the actual cost currently of what an election would be. And the elections administrator estimated that to be about $46,000, $46,000. And if there were a runoff, that would be double. What you have before you is an estimate from the elections administrator. In the event that the central appraisal election does not go forward and it's canceled. If that were to cancel, you can see it's gonna double your cost just for the regular portion of the election. And then if there were a runoff in a trustee election, you're looking at double of that. So what you have before you is an estimate for approximately $95,000. If there were a runoff, it would be double that. But that's only if the central appraisal election doesn't make. And the reason for that cost is because then the district would be taking on all of the costs of the election.
And Ms. Collins, were you able to get the date of the filing deadline for the CAD positions? I believe when we spoke, it was gonna be the day before our board meeting, something like that?
It is the day before the board meeting, yes.
We as trustees would at least have that information come regular board meeting. So in talking with the district staff, what I kind of asked them is, today, we're gonna make the decision on if it's gonna be an appointment or an election. And then from there, on our regular board meeting, we would vote, if we go with the appointment, what that process would look like. I'd like to put an ad hoc together to kind of develop that process, using the things that was done with the last appointment in District, in Daniel's District, and then bring it to the board. We can agree on how that works at that board meeting. And if we go with an election, we would call for the election at our next board meeting. But really, today's about which avenue we wanna take, and then work will be done in the interim to get to our February board meeting. Trustee Hernandez.
Can I just go ahead and give my thoughts?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So I, I think in this day and age, where, you know, school finance is so tight and with the legislation not really, Texas legislation, Texas legislature really not doing us any favors, I think it's, would be prudent, financially responsible, to have an appointment rather than election. I think we need to appropriate as many dollars as possible directly to the classroom. And so my recommendation would be to try and get together to make an appointment. The only thing I would ask is that, if there's a way to involve the community in what that appointment would look like, so that that person is representative of the community's interest, I would, you know, ask for some sort of process to define that.
Perfect. Trustee Call?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with trustee Hernandez on this one. I think the community elected us, and they put a lot of faith in us to govern the school district. And having been through an appointment process six years ago, that was a really interesting experience, and I learned a lot from that. And I, I would be happy to provide my input on any ad hoc committee where, you know, we come up with a process that certainly includes the, includes the community, where we ask the right questions and do the proper vetting to make the best decision about having a new trustee join our ranks. I think we can, I think we can make a good decision between the, between the six of us. And I have confidence in this board that we can do that.
So I'm happy you volunteered, trustee Call, because my thought process was, being as the one that went through that process, you would have a little bit more foresight and, and experience of what that, that process was like, the good and the bad. So you could be the chair of the ad hoc with others that wanna volunteer to serve on it, to start building out that process in the next, and trustee trustee Hernandez's hand by the next February meeting. And ad hocs have to stay under three or less, correct, Ms. Collins?
That's correct. I would caution even having three, because it just takes one for it to become a walking quorum, unless they're properly posted meetings.
Okay. Trustee Hernandez.
For somebody who hasn't done this before, can you explain that process? I don't understand what we're proposing.
So because trustee Osavedo, Representative Osavedo was elected to city council, his seat become vacant on Monday, I believe, when he got sworn in. So now this board is left up to two decisions, which is, we call for a special election, or we call for an appointment. That's what's gonna happen today. If we go with the elections route, we'll call for the election at our regular board meeting in two weeks. If we call for, or vote for an appointment, what will happen is, we will agree to that today, establish an ad hoc committee today, and then come back in two weeks and vote on the process. So the ad hoc committee would come back, report to the full board, say this is what they recommend, and then we would take a vote in two weeks as well.
And our goal for that is what, what?
The ad hoc committee?
To expedite the process?
To develop the process. So there, there was an appointment six years ago in Daniel's District, and they went, Ms. Collins, you'll have to correct me if I get this wrong, because I know I read your memo, but there was an interview process. There was a public forum at Coronado High School, and then the board made that decision. And so we wanna codify that process and that, that system, so that anybody that asks us, how can I go and apply or be a part of it, they have the information publicly ready. Ms. Avedra, I'd look to your communications team, whichever route we go to, just to really spend a lot of time getting this information out in an easy manner.
So that's the process that we're gonna, and we haven't decided on that?
Correct. Today is, we're picking an election or the appointment. That, that's the, that's the vote before us today. And then I know that trustee Call and trustee Hernandez have volunteered to serve on the ad hoc. We're, we are capable of having up to three. I know that there are risks as far as the Open Meetings Act goes, but there's still space for another trustee if, if we so choose to go that route.
Well, I'd be interested in doing it. However, I just didn't know what's gonna be the process on our part. And I guess that's what we're gonna establish.
Correct. The ad hoc will, will work towards building that process out. I'd like to really look at the framework that we have used in the past. From what I hear, and trustee Call may have a different opinion on this, it seemed like a very good process. I think we just have to build on it some and put some checks in place for vetting. Trustee Call?
Yeah, spoiler alert. It was a good process, what, what did the, the district use six years ago? But it was missing a piece, and the piece was verifying some of the claims that applicants made. So what, what happened six years ago essentially is that the, the previous trustee, Dory Fenenbach, resigned so she could run for Congress. And the, the district decided not to do an election, and they decided to do an appointment process. And they, they advertised to the community that there was this board seat that was open, and anybody essentially could apply. It was me and several other people that applied. There was a, there was a candidate forum at, at Coronado High School that the school, all the trustees went to, and some folks from the community went to, and there was a set, you know, list of questions that each one of the, you know, the candidates were asked. And then that followed a couple of weeks later, if I recall correctly, by a board meeting, where the, each one of the candidates came back, and the, the trustees got to ask them, got to ask them questions. They were, they were decided upon ahead of time, so it was fair, like they weren't, you know, each trustee were not able to just make up questions on the fly and ask them. But I ended up not being selected in that process. And the, the trustee that was selected in the process totally misrepresented a lot of things in her background, and it, it didn't come out until later, because I ran against her during the election. And, you know, between the media and the community, you know, it was, it was discovered that all the claims that she made during the selection process were actually not true. So the reason I bring that up is that, one of the, one of the things I wanna add on the process this time is some type of verification mechanism, where, you know, any claims for education or work history or whatever, like, can be verified, so.
Trustee Quer.
Sorry I was late, everybody. But just to add on to this, I know that with Ms. Collins stating that there may be an issue with a walking quorum on the ad hoc committee, you said that there's enough for three, there would be three?
Yes, with, with the caveat that we do run the risk of one person talking to another person would cause a quorum issue.
So just, you know, speaking in, you know, avoiding legalese or anything like that, it would be my, my opinion that we not have three members on the ad hoc committee, so that we can avoid any kind of walking quorums, so that we avoid any kind of inference of impropriety at all, seeing as how this is already going to be a special election, in the sense that it would be. My thoughts are also for an appointment-type process to get it done, one, more efficiently, and two, to avoid the cost. Once the vetting process is done, then, as you know, President Iribali stated, we can go about it that way. But I would, I would state that if Ms. Hernandez, or trustee Hernandez and trustee Call have already stated that they wanna be on the ad hoc committee to avoid any walking quorum, that we leave it at that. But that's just my opinion.
Well, and I just wanna share with the board that although there, there may be an ad hoc committee, the rest of the board is not, you know, there, there's still opportunity for other board members to provide their feedback and their input to the board members who are actually serving on the ad hoc. So I don't want there to be a feeling that if you're not on the ad hoc committee, that you don't have, you know, any sort of say in how the process, you know, is outlined. And, you know, because the entire board votes on the process, number one, I think that, you know, so I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Could I ask a quick question? Ms. Collins, would it be okay if we were to solicit recommendations as ad hoc committee members from the entirety of the board as we begin to develop that process?
Of course. You can solicit the information, it's just that you're not gonna take, take any kind of action, you know, not looking like you're taking a straw poll or anything like that. But you could certainly ask for that input and take that into account.
So President Iribali, I think, you know, if it were to be the case that trustee Call and I were to have this ad hoc committee, I would recommend that we sort of solicit input from the entire board and all trustees, so that everybody would be included in sort of how we frame the ad hoc committee. Of course, using trustee Call's, you know, expertise and experience with the, with the actual system.
And Ms. Avedra, I would probably lean on you to kind of be that convener of information, just to avoid any, any issues or to keep the process as transparent as, as we can.
I just needed to know, and how are we gonna, because it, it does feel like, when you pretext it like you did in regards to how this process will work, it felt like as though just two people would be part of this. And I really do think, because it's an elected, a position, I'm very sensitive on just allowing to. And I, and I see that, and I see the value of it, but. And I see that and I see the value of it, but this is gonna be a hard one for me because I haven't decided which way I'm gonna do it and it depends on how we're gonna work out this process, because if the process to me doesn't seem fair, I don't think we should go this route.
So there'll be multiple stages, so I would say that if we go the ad hoc committee with two members, what would happen is there would be a solicitation email that says, this is the process that was used the last time, using Ms. Collins' memo that she sent out a couple of weeks ago, kind of as the base. Provide your feedback like they do in, in our board memos by X date. Ms. Ivadra and the team would compile that data, send it out to our ad hoc members, so they would have your feedback and information. And then the ad hoc team would come back in our regulars, February meeting, and that's when they would present what they created. And we as a board can ask questions, we can ask for modifications, we can agree and with the process or, or, you know, make amendments, things of that nature. So, there'll be, I would say, two stages if you're not serving on the ad hoc committee to provide feedback, ask for changes, and, and go through that process.
And how about offering recommendations or?
That would be in the solicitation email that's sent out. You could offer all the recommendations that you would want at that, in that.
And then how do we do this? Is this gonna be like an interview process?
Well, that's what the ad hoc committee would, would establish. So, I, I'd like to use, or I'd, I'd recommend that the ad hoc committee uses the memo that Ms., or not the memo, the process that was used six years ago as our starting point, and then amplify and enhance it so it's more transparent, more fair, and, and to Mr. Call's point, it looks like validation's gonna be a point that they're gonna address.
And do we have that today?
The memo or?
Those questions, like, it was done six years ago.
The only thing that we have is the process that Ms. Collins shared in her memo, and then as trustee Call outlined, what that process looked like.
I don't know if that's enough information. I don't know if that's enough information for me today, to decide today. I would need to at least see the, how it was done and the process. To me, this is very delicate because it is an elected position and for us, I just, it, I didn't know about this process until right now at 11:00 AM.
And I will say it has been included in our board packet for the last, I want to say, three weeks. If, I think it's been the last three or the last two, so, you know, I definitely, I think there's, it was included in the backup as well, is that correct, Ms. Collins?
Yes, it, it's included in the backup. It was the minutes from the, I believe it was a November 17th meeting from 2017, and in the backup, it talked about how the board would establish a process to fill the vacancy. It included filling out an application, much like a candidate fills out an application, but it's not actually a candidate, you know, the, the Secretary of State form. There was some publication process, there was an application deadline, there were a candidate forum at Coronado High School in the past. They asked the board to work with the different associations, different organizations throughout the city on their, kind of their feedback. There was a public meeting, it was a posted board meeting, in which all the candidates were interviewed by the board, and the board took a roll call vote after all the candidates were interviewed as to which appointee they, they selected at the time. That was the process from 2017, and I believe what trustee Call is saying, he would like some verification added to that process, just looking into the background of what people's claims are, perhaps things that are on their resume as well.
And Ms. Collins, in talking, I know that we've talked about this, so I think you would have to be included in that process and conversation with the ad hoc committee as well, just to make sure that we're following the standards by the Texas, Texas Secretary of State or any other guidelines that are necessary.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
And just, if I may, President Iribali, I, if, if I'm on the committee to, you know, help build this appointment process, I definitely want everybody's input. And then what, what, it sounds like what'll happen is that, once we build a recommendation of the process, then we bring it back to the board and the board can modify it, or deny it or approve it, you know, whatever, whatever the board decides to do, so. They'll, regardless of who's on the committee, like, everybody will be involved, for sure. So, unless there's any other...
One more thing, trustee Hernandez, I think what we can do as well is we, if we move in with, forward with an appointments process, and that gets approved by the board, we can work on getting that solicitation email out to the trustees today, so that the trustees have a good week to review the memo that went out, what the process was, to allow for enough time. That way the ad hoc committee has all that information when they go into the development of the process, to ensure that your feedback is included in those conversations, should we move in that direction.
So, just for clarification, the, the board is voting on the method by which we will fill the seat, either through election or appointment. Should that be an appointment, there will be an ad hoc committee to develop a process that will be brought, brought back to the board to vote on. Should the board vote to do an election, then we will proceed in that manner. So I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you, Ms. Ivadra. Trustee Call?
If there's no other discussion or comments, I'd like to make a motion. All right. I move that the board fill the vacancy by appointment.
Second?
I have a motion by trustee Call and a second by trustee Hernandez. Before we vote, I will say that if this motion passes, the ad hoc committee would be established with trustee Call as chair and trustee Hernandez as the participant, lone participant, I guess. So as we vote on that...
So that's a, a friendly amendment to the motion?
Would it have to be an amendment?
I, I think that that would probably...
Sorry, so then I...
Well, if it's added to the motion.
I request that that's a friendly amendment, trustee Call, to include the ad hoc with you as chair, trustee Hernandez as a participant.
Approved.
All right. That, and we're good to vote? Yes, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, in opposition? No? So that motion passes with four, five yeses, with trustee Hernandez voting no. This will take us to, well, Ms. Ivadra, we can work on that solicitation email, that'd be great. That takes us to item four, and this, these items will be clo, or, meaning to be closed under sections 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code.
Good negotiation. I'll be good negotiation. Stacey. You know Lisa?
We met at the elevator.
Very nice.
Yeah.
So she's on that great program. The grant she's working on, we just installed.
Right now, three of them are still in need.
So there's interactive new systems. So she's learning. Do you have space?
...
Good afternoon, and we are back at 12:21. This will take us to item number five, discuss and take appropriate action on personnel recommendation, Director Fund Development and Education Foundation. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation of Russell Booth for the Director of Fund Development and Education Foundation as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's a motion by trustee Hernandez, a second by trustee Cuellar. All in favor?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously six zero. This will take us to item number six, adjournment, and we will close this meeting out at 12:22. Thank you, everyone.